Just for you out in the audience, but it's kind of cold up here, so I can see everyone will be still has their coats on, but we might end up putting ours on here, too. So calling the meeting to order, and would you like to join us for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right, Allison, roll call, please.
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
You.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Knopa.
Here.
Okay, I do want to just state there's going to be one little change here on the agenda. So B, under business from the public, is going to be after C, the second reading of the ordinances, because we've closed the public hearing over ADUs, so it's, we'll just go ahead and take up those items before, so it doesn't have to wait for the business from the public, and plus, we couldn't take any more public testimony on that. Okay, with that, at about 7:18 PM, I will open the public hearing, and this is going to be over the two items of the wastewater and water system development charges, so, all right.
Thank you, Mayor. Sure everybody can hear me. So before you tonight, there are two separate public hearings, one for the wastewater system development charge update, and one for the water system development charge update. Each one is a separate public hearing. So first, the wastewater system development charge update. In preparation for tonight, we mailed out the required notices and posted the required public hearing notice, and we have not received any written testimony for tonight. So staff first began working with council in a series of work sessions, I think we had three work sessions beginning in November, where we talked about the details of the wastewater methodology, talked about the maximum allowable fee that can be charged based on that methodology. There are no significant changes in the methodology to the fee structure and how that fee is allocated to new and existing customers. However, the major changes that were made were to the project list, updated the collection system projects and projects for the water reclamation facility, and also moved projects from the improvement list to the reimbursement list. So all that resulted in the new maximum allowable fee that can be charged. So an important thing to note for tonight is, if the methodology is adopted, it does not set a specific fee. Basically, it states a maximum allowable fee that can be charged, so the methodology tonight just adopts the methodology and a proposed maximum allowable fee. There is a separate public hearing next month on March 13th where we will consider a specific wastewater SDC fee to charge, but that's not tonight. That's it. So any answer any questions?
Okay, questions? All right, okay, thank you, Rob. Allison, did anyone sign up for this?
That's on both of them.
That was it. Okay, all right, so who signed up to speak on the wastewater system development charge methodology was John Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. John Robinson, 2500 Del Rio Court Southeast, Albany, 97322. One of the first things in looking over the data, and when we talk in government, we're talking about transparency a lot, and what was confusing to me in looking it over, and maybe Rob just addressed part of that, was that with this new SDC resolution, I didn't see any comparison from what we have existing to the new one as far as cost. And it would be helpful to see what those cost increases or differences are. And I did hear him say that there's going to be another public hearing on that, March 13th or something, so maybe that's addressed then. But just from a transparency standpoint and talking about these changes, it would be helpful for business owners, contractors, taxpayers, to see what we're moving from. I did read in there, and that's kind of one of the things that I wanted to comment on, was the term maximum allowable SDC fee, and I think it was $7,088. And, you know, from a taxpayer perspective, and a business perspective, a contractor perspective, you know, that terminology saying maximum, it breeds this feeling that, I think taxpayers and business owners already have, that government has an insatiable desire for more and more cash all the time, never happy, never satisfied. And that just, to me, is the wrong thing to look at, instead of look at, you know, what do we need for the SDC to do the business of the city, and how can we partner with businesses and people to do that, rather than let's inflict the maximum penalty, the maximum that we can get. It just, it sounds like a pound of flesh. We've got to get a pound of flesh for it. And what's frustrating about that, I guess, you know, as an example, I think it was probably a year and a half ago now, you instituted the, what I call, the rainwater tax, you called it a stormwater fee, and right after that was instituted, the first year, you came back with three separate requests for increase that raised at 5%, 5%, 5% on top of that. And then I just read recently where this year, I think you want another 17%. So again, that is just some background information, I understand it has nothing to do with this, but it's just part of that mentality that I'm trying to get across, that feels like a pound of flesh, we've got to have more, we've got to have more. Along with those thoughts, one of the things that I read in there, talked about this inflationary index, and it's rated to the Seattle CCI, and so I guess I really have a question about that from the standpoint of why that index? You know, we live in this little Albany town of 53,000, Seattle's way up there, they're a big city, big money, many of us can't afford to live in Seattle, let alone go there, and I'm wondering why we're indexing our rate to a Seattle rate? I don't know the answer to that, I'm asking a question, I'd like to hear some discussion on that, basically, why the Seattle index? Is there another index that more approximates our part of the world here? Or again, is this part of my theory that we're going to go pick the Seattle index because we know it's expensive and we've got to get this pound of flesh? The other thing I want to point out, as a builder, SDCs increase the cost of housing. There's not a bunch of wealthy builders that are just going to open their pocket and pay for this, it all gets down to those dollars transferred to the price of that house, or the price of that apartment complex, which is reflected in rents and affordable housing, and all those things come into play. So especially, all of the SDC fees are really kind of a sticking point with a lot of builders because they do not provide one stick of lumber, one piece of soil, they don't do anything for the builder, and it's just a pass-through cost, and so that's just a sticking point. I wanted to point that out. And I think the last thing I want to say is that, you know, in reading the report and looking at a lot of things, it feels like, again, from my perspective, that we're never hearing about programs or processes to reduce cost at the city level. Alls we ever hear about is, I need another resolution because I need more money. And as somebody who spent, you know, 25 years in working for, you know, Fortune 500-type companies and engineering and other fields, you know, we had it beaten our head, you know, we went to training on DEMing, we learned about, you know, methodologies to reduce cost, it was just a constant, all the time, how can we do this cheaper, how can we do this better, you know, how can we push forward with this? You know, business doesn't have the opportunity to just raise the price every year, raise the price, raise the price. And so I feel like I'd like to see more of that in government, I'd like to see more responsibility to looking at, how can we reduce cost? If you come and you say, hey, John, we did all this, we've looked at reduced costs, we did these programs, we're going to have to raise this fee, okay, but it feels like right now, we're not doing a lot of work at looking at reducing costs, we're just, it's easy just to go to the till, you know, and it just feels that way. So anyway, I thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
So, yeah, John, I mean, I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I do know we do our due diligence and staff to look at all that cost, but also, if we didn't have the system development charges, there wouldn't be the funds to pay for expanding the system to be able to pay for new development. New development wouldn't be able to build if it wasn't for that, you know, to be able to pay for that infrastructure on that. There was also, we did have a couple meetings of work sessions on this, so you can see online our, the material that was presented to the council over reviewing the methodology to this, so we had a couple meetings on those. But, was there anyone else that wanted to comment on system development charge methodology for this public hearing? Yes, Matthew?
My name is Matthew Fitchett, I live at 1140 10th Avenue Southwest. Thank you for having me this evening. I do understand the cost of many things go up, and SDCs are no different than that. I don't love paying them, but I also appreciate being able to flush toilet, not deal with that anymore, turn on the water, have good water to drink, and those are things that we have to have. One of the things that I would like to start the conversation on is potentially a system, as I hear that the costs are going up, I think the need for some sort of a deferral program or financing for SDCs is going to become necessary. Large developers and builders, I think, have the pockets and are able to secure loans at very good interest rates to do bigger deals, and as time goes on, I see more and more of the houses being built in our area just by the large builders, often out of town. I have done quite a bit of work in Lebanon, one of the reasons that I appreciate Lebanon is they finance my SDC charges. They financed my last ones at 2.75% for 10 years, you make an equal payment every six months, and if you were to amortize that over a loan period, it's a pretty significant savings compared to minor investment properties, so maybe anywhere from 5.5% to 6% interest on the life of the loan. And I also know that I don't have to have that money upfront, because the first thing you do is you pay SDCs and permits. So you're actually paying interest on that money the longest of anything throughout your whole project. And I could be wrong, but whether the city gets that money day one or in time, you often have projects come up over time, and so I don't see that as being a huge issue. Also, the city of Lebanon is working to potentially subordinate down the road. Currently, when you sell a property, it's a lien, and it would get paid off at sale, so it's not burdensome for a builder to have that money upfront, but ultimately, often in a six-month timeframe, the city is getting paid. If you were to build something cash, you could finance those SDCs for 10 years. I also know that recently Medford came up with an SDC deferral program. If you're building a single-family residential, that'd be one and two family dwellings, and your SDCs would by nature be under $250,000. They will give you a deferral so that you do not pay that SDC until you have occupancy or sale, so you wouldn't, it would be financed, but no interest, there's a $150 application fee for that. So the city does get paid in a fairly short term, but an individual builder would not be out that money from day one in order to break ground. If you were doing industrial, commercial, or multifamily, and your SDCs are between 200, under 250,000, excuse me, under 500,000, sorry, under 250,000, they will do the same thing. If they're between 250,000 and 500,000, you pay 30% down, and then they will defer the other 70% until sale or occupancy, and if it's over $500,000 with SDCs, you actually don't qualify for their deferral program. But if you're doing a project of that size, I'm assuming you have the funds, that that's not the end of the world. So I would just like to open the conversation with the council, the mayor, the manager, to potentially look at a deferral program or financing SDCs to help out as the costs go up. I would be happy to, this is information about the deferral program from Medford, I'd be happy to pass that along, and I can also get some information from Lebanon, I know most of it off the top of the head, because I've done it several times over there.
Okay, we can have staff check into it, but you can leave it with the clerk, and she can get his copies, too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Could I ask our staff if we've considered that kind of thing?
Maybe we should wait till, it's really not applicable to this public hearing, but be happy to expand upon that a little bit outside of the public hearing, if you'd like.
Okay.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, thank you, folks, and with that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:32 PM. And council, you do have a resolution for the first wastewater system, resolution is on page six. Questions? What would you like to do?
Well, I wonder, staff would like to comment on that proposal now or later, probably later, I'm guessing.
Yeah, you can do it, I want to do it later.
Okay.
Whatever's good for you. I'd like to hear a chance to say.
Sure. Whenever the mayor wants me to talk, I'll talk.
Well, go ahead.
All right, we do have, currently have financing of SDCs available, they go through our finance department. The rate has historically been pretty high for that, I'm not sure how that's set, so... Correct. So there, I don't know what process we would have to go through in order to reconsider what that rate is, I'm not, we don't see a lot of them, I haven't seen any come through in a couple of years, so I'm guessing maybe Gina hasn't had to deal with any yet, and...
She hasn't had a lot.
But it would be something that we could look into, when we actually talk about setting the fees in March, maybe before that, we could come back and share with you a little bit about what we might learn on that. As far as deferrals or timing of accepting payments, it's typically been tied to building permit or connection to the system is when they're due, I believe that's actually in our municipal code. So you could consider alternatives to that, and there's, there would be pros and cons to think about and work through, but it doesn't mean it's a bad idea, and it doesn't mean that it wouldn't be worth looking at. But I think the time to do that would be at the time that you're talking about, setting fees.
Yeah, I know you need some time to look into it.
Right.
Say what's feasible, what's reasonable.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, did staff want to address any of the concerns, other concerns that were brought forward this evening, or was there anything wrong that needed to be clarified?
I would like to speak to the Seattle CCI, Construction Cost Index. That's an excellent question. There's a couple, a couple of responses. First of all, the SDCs, the ORSs that govern the SDCs require that the agency implementing the SDC tie any inflationary index to a published index that is published to address inflationary issues. So this, the Engineering News record is the most reputable construction cost index that's out there, and the reason we choose Seattle, a couple of reasons, it's, first of all, it's the closest regional city that publishes an index, the next closest one would be San Francisco, and then Denver. Seattle is applicable because it doesn't track the cost of construction, it tracks the change in cost of construction, so it tracks inflation, not what it costs to do a project in Seattle, but it tracks the change in that cost. And that change in cost is more representative of the Northwest, not just Seattle.
So material, not...
Yeah, right, more material, not, and labor as well, but most of the cost is material.
All right, thank you.
The only other thing I'd add is that, response to the term maximum allowable, that's a term in state law, so we're, whether we like it or not, that's the term that we have to utilize in order to establish that, that maximum allowable, or excuse me, the maximum allowable charge that we can, that we could potentially impose. If you're interested in looking at community comparisons and comparison of what might actually be recommended for a fee to charge in relationship to our neighboring communities, and also what we currently charge, that's went to council a couple times, we have that readily available. If you touch base with Rob before you leave when we're done here, he can point your right to it, and you can check that out.
Okay, all right, yeah, Bill?
So these resolutions just have to do with the methodology, we'll have another public hearing on the rate increase, so with that, I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution on page six that deals with methodology for development of the SDCs for the wastewater system.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried, and then your next resolution is on page 25, that's for the water system.
So I'll also make a motion for adoption of the resolution on page 25, dealing with the modifying methodology for development of SDCs as related to the water system.
Excuse me, Mayor? We need to have a separate public hearing on that resolution.
I combined both of them. When I mentioned it, it was for the wastewater and the water system. Yeah.
I'm sorry, staff, staff missed that, so our discussion was only on wastewater, so I missed it, too.
Yeah, does anybody want to talk about...
Good catch on that. All right, Rob, go ahead and come back up.
So it's going to be quick.
Okay.
We're going to open the public hearing.
Let me reopen at 7:38 PM, I'm reopening it, yeah, for water.
So for the water system methodology, unlike the wastewater system, the water system methodology for the SDCs, we did not change the structure of the water SDC methodology, the structure is the same, the only thing that we changed in the methodology for the water system, we updated the project cost, the existing projects listed in the methodology, updated those to current cost to November 2018, and we allocated or accounted for the projects that were completed in the project list, from moving projects from the reimbursement list to the, from the improvement list to the reimbursement list. And that was it, so that resulted in a new maximum allowable charge.
Questions? All right, thank you. And since I reopened the public hearing, and which was, I had mentioned for, you know, both systems, but was there anyone that wanted to comment on what staff had presented? Okay, with not, then about 7:39 PM, I'll close the public hearing, and council, what would you like to do?
I'll just motion on the floor, does it need to be restated?
Go ahead, yeah, there was a second. Go ahead.
So I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution on page 25, related to modifying the methodology for the development of SDCs related to the water system.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Debbie, for coming down, too. Great seeing you again.
You know, and I just wanted to say something, it wasn't appropriate during the public hearing, but I think Mr. Robinson brought up some valid points and worthy of more discussion. Yeah, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, we have to sit through a lot of meetings, hours and hours and hours, and a lot of information, and quite honestly, if you're a working man like Mr. Robinson, you just don't have the time to do that. My point is, they don't have, a lot of people don't have the opportunity to hear some of the things that we hear, and some of the efforts that are done on the part of the city, specifically addressing saving money. As an example, we've heard about ongoing efforts in the water treatment, as well as the wastewater treatment plant, of improvements they've made to save electricity, and, you know, I can't remember the number, but it's significant, and they've, through more energy-efficient motors, control for lighting or whatever, have been able to lower the power bill substantially, and it does lower the operating costs, but that doesn't mean that the overall operating costs don't go up, I guess, what I'm saying, you know, it could be higher. There's times when Jeff has come to us and said, you know, we talked about a 5% raise, but we've looked to think where our costs are, and we think we can get by with 2%, as an example. So I think a lot of times, those things are lost in the shuffle, not to say there isn't room for improvement, but some of those things kind of go unnoticed sometimes.
Thank you. To Bill's point, we get the vast majority of the information in work sessions, and of course, work sessions are not televised. And so when somebody from the public wants to go find that information, it is very difficult to find. I mean, you can, if you, we become a very visual group of people as a species these days, and not seeing it, I don't know what the answer to it is, but not seeing it and only looking it up on a recording, it's not linear, or, well, excuse me, it is just linear, you can't jump from place to place, so knowing that there's going to be something there. You know, I guess I'd throw it out there that, is there a way that anybody could come up with that, that kind of information would be more available to the public?
We can have our study sessions in here, where they're televised, could be televised, and recorded far better than in the court.
I agree with that.
Could be.
I think it would be better, too, plus we have a better sound system and all that, you know, so, yeah. Okay, anything else?
This is called the council chambers.
Okay, so next, we're going to have a second reading of ordinance, and before we start on that, I want to also mention to the council, I don't know, has anybody read HB 2001? This was the House bill that was proposed by House Speaker Tina Kotek over the single-family zoning, so...
Haven't read it verbatim, got a report on it from the chamber, and it's scary.
So it is scary, and...
Foolish beyond scary.
Right, and I did, I submitted some testimony for their hearing they had on Monday, and I couldn't make it, and I put the testimony on my behalf, my personal desk, so it wasn't representing the whole council because I didn't have time to be able to, you know, we weren't meeting to be able to formally do it, so there was a lot of testimony there, they had two hearings on Monday, but there's a piece in there that shocked me on it. So it's not just single-family zoning, so which, with single-family, there's a lot of language in there that is not defined, and where it says, if you're going to have a lot, you have to build with middle housing, which middle housing is either a duplex, triplex, or fourplex, but it doesn't say a lot size, so is that considered 50 acres, or is that a 5,000 square foot lot? So there's a lot, to me, it's very poorly written, it has a lot of support for this bill, you know, in more of the larger cities, but there's a piece in there that has thrown in about ADUs. So, and remember when the ADU, the 2017 legislative session, and had in that Senate bill 1051, and did the ADU requirement for all cities to allow it in single-family zoning, that's where we're kind of at today over this issue, that was pretty much setting, letting us do our reasonable regulations, and none of us, we kind of felt like the state was taking away our local control, just like they did when it came to the annexations, also taking away cities' local control. Well, now they slipped in a piece about ADUs that now we cannot regulate for off-street parking and owner-occupied. So when I got ahold of the speaker's aide to find out, why is this in there, and because many cities have added this language, including, we have Lynn County, Benton County, have done the same language as owner-occupied and off-street parking, and they felt that was going to be a barrier to ADUs. So it's pretty much trying to still take away our local control of what we would like for our community, and now putting it and slipping into this bill that's going to turn around, and now... going to turn around and now trying to prevent us from having single-family zoning. And to be having, and it even includes, in the urban growth area, even if you're going, you know, outside the city limits, you have to build, yep, urban fringe with single, with middle housing. So what I'd recommend and ask for, that we still, that we support DC 0418, which is our state minimum standards, so we can still try to fight House Bill 2001, this legislative session, and to really show, we want to, you know, we need to be standing up to the state on trying to take away our local control when it comes to how we want our communities to grow and what type of character do we want for our community. I feel if we don't, then it's pretty much given a blessing to HB 2001, that, okay, that's fine with that piece. I think we need to stand our ground and at least, and say that we're not going to be supporting anything on that HB 2001. Then what we can do is then we can visit this, this summer after the legislative session, so we can see what takes place after the session on that. So any thoughts on that?
Yeah.
I did read it. I don't know if there's been anything added since I read it a couple of weeks ago, but I do know that it was stated in there that they do not recommend the owner-occupied because it's too hard to regulate. I mean, you can't, you can't check it. It's too, you know.
No, that bill didn't have anything written to that. That was not stated in that bill.
Well, I read it somewhere.
It could have been maybe one of the reasons for putting it in there, but there, what I was told, and they said, because they did a survey of how many cities, you know, after they've adopted for the ADUs, and they found that there were several that was putting in off-street parking, quite a few, they said statewide, off-street parking and owner-occupied, and they felt that was preventing the ADUs, so that's why they slipped it into this bill.
I don't understand it that way. I, I mean, for one thing, it's, who's, who in staff's gonna go out and check and make sure that the owner is on the front house? You know, we don't have the staff to do what we need to do.
Well, we've been through, we've discussed all that, and it can't be done.
Yeah, I know we have, but you asked.
I guess my question is, if, if the lack of parking and the lack of owner-occupation of, is something that we were willing, that four of us were willing to vote for before, what has changed? The fact that the Oregon Legislature seems to, I don't know where they're coming from. I mean, there are, this is not the only issue. I mean, there's the marijuana issue right now that's coming to the fore, that is, if you are like me and have government contracts, the federal government says you shall have a no-tolerance policy. And the state is coming back saying you cannot have a, so I'm either in violation of federal law or I'm in violation of state law. I don't know how it's gonna work out. But, I mean, ultimately, it's the kind of stuff that you say, you know, this isn't worth it anymore, and you just stop. But to this specifically, I don't see that it's different. I recognize you want to, you want to push back. I don't know that anything we do is going to push back against, you know. Now, the state, sometimes if the state gets a lawsuit or are taken to court, they pay attention and, well, it looks like they're paying attention on waste, on stormwater. But-
I just, I just feel it's so important for our community and to be able to protect our zoning and our land use that we have in our city, that I just can't see, okay, hands over, go ahead and do what you want, state. I want to fight this all we can. And, you know, this isn't the first time the state has done this, and there's many times that we have challenged them and have won. But if we just sit back and let it happen, it's gonna happen. And then what are they gonna come back, look at what they slipped in on the ADUs this session from the 2017, what are they gonna do next to us? You know, and mostly, if HB 2001 gets passed, then what, what's gonna come back at us?
Doesn't that happen in court, though?
Not necessarily.
Well, you know, when it comes to this type of legislation.
Hey, Your Honor, you know, I think most people recognize that over the years, I've tended to be kind of a Democrat. In fact, I've been accused of being a socialist at a time or two. And there are elections. And I think the Democrats in Salem, and particularly the Democrats coming out of Portland, with this, I think, in this one particular issue is going to push it that way, I think they're gonna find themselves out of a job. And I've said a time or two that I'm kind of ashamed to admit that I'm a Democrat. And so, I think this is gonna have repercussions, and I think we're out to push back on it. Yes, I'm fully in favor of pushing back. And I think other cities are pushing back on it.
Well, and there wasn't much time, and we just found out about, it was on the hearing on Monday.
Spring night.
And I believe it was Thursday or Friday, I think, when the Oregon cities had called and gave a heads up on it. And, but there was mostly testimony, Portland, Eugene, Salem, there was, I'm counting three other mayors that I know real well that submitted letters, and that was it.
And they're opposed to getting rid of single-family zoning?
No, they were not, they were-
They want to get rid of single-family zoning in Salem and Eugene?
No, right. Yeah, they were in support of the bill. Not the, not the cities, not the cities, individual people came out of the bigger cities and-
Oh, sure.
And advocacy groups on that. The other mayors and myself, we were all opposed to this bill. Yeah.
So the mayors of Salem and Eugene were opposed to-
They never testified. Yeah.
Didn't testify.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question. Maybe I'm missing something. What does pending legislation have to do with what's before us on the two resolutions today? I mean, that's pending legislation that we don't know if it's gonna pass or not, or what it's gonna come out as. And I understand the pushback, but we've been toying with this issue now for a long time.
Yep.
And I don't see where this House bill has anything to do with our resolution. So am I, am I missing something?
I think you are, yeah.
What am I missing then?
I think, as the mayor said, if we don't show that we're opposed to this, they can, they say, well, how can you be opposed to it if you are in favor of ADUs that are, that can be owned by a developer in Portland or someplace, and you don't care about the parking on the streets? You know, it's just the same issue. It's the same issue of having a livable neighborhood. And we are opposing their legislation that will make our neighborhoods less livable.
And how are we doing that?
By saying that we, if we're going to have ADUs, we're gonna have them homeowner-occupied in at least one of the units, and we're going to look at providing adequate parking. That's how we're doing it.
Yeah, Rich?
The bill that Tina Kotek brought forth is something that covers a lot of stuff. ADUs is one of them. There's a whole bunch of it in there that I, I don't know the specific pieces each time. And of course, the longer it's in the legislature, it changes. So you don't know what it, you know, what goes in and what comes out. Many times, they're completely two different things. But you can agree with four things and disagree with 90 things, and that's the way life is. I mean, we, seven of us on the dais, we agree on most stuff. I mean, we, we fight over individual pieces, but this is the same situation. In that bill, I think some pieces of it are god-awful.
Well, there's not a lot to that bill. It's pretty defined in that bill.
But when it comes to just, if part of ADUs, or whether it is your house and right next to your house, to have a fourplex, I think that's different things. We agree on stuff and we disagree on stuff. And I don't see that you have to disagree on everything in the bill to be able to tell yourself that you've stood up against it. You can agree on some stuff or be neutral on some stuff. I mean, I don't disagree with, I mean, well, four of us have said, we don't disagree on the parking and we don't disagree on owner-occupation of what you talked about there.
I think that's unfortunate.
And, and that's reasonable for us to disagree on things. But that doesn't mean that we have to stand up on our hind legs to Salem and say, you know, you're completely in awful and terrible on every single thing on that, in that bill. Some of us may disagree with the entire thing. Some, you may agree with some pieces of that bill. I mean, it's, it's not black and white.
I agree with Mike. Let's, let's vote on these ordinances and move on.
Well, I mean, and I will give you a heads up, though. So on the DC 04, that if it does not prevail, and if 05 does, then I will veto it again until after the legislative session. I'm very adamant that I want to be able to fight House Bill 2001 and need to be able to do it showing where our community is at and where the-
That is, that's right. You can, you can do that, but you're, you're just one voice out of seven.
Right.
So that really doesn't represent everybody at the dais.
Yeah, and we're only seven voices out of, what is it, 50,000?
Under 3,000.
And the people that I talk to, in a wide range, from the Brock River Republicans to the almost communists, they don't like the idea of absentee ownership of ADUs. They just don't like it.
So what I'm trying to say is, I'd like us as a body to be able to take a position on HB 2001 later on, which that way we can really advocate as a city, you know, against that bill. But if you don't want to, then, then that's fine. So, Sean, do you want to read the second reading for the 04 on that one?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
Sykes?
No.
Bessie Johnson?
No.
Kellum?
No.
Alex Johnson?
No.
Coburn?
Yes.
Canopa?
No, I don't get to vote on that.
Oh, you're personal.
So that does not pass. Second reading for the 05?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Roll call.
Olson?
No.
Sykes?
Yes.
Bessie Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
Yes.
Alex Johnson?
Yes.
Coburn?
No.
Okay. All right. It prevailed, but I will, will be taking this up again this summer after the session. So, okay.
Well, you can, Madam Mayor, to your point, you can, you can veto it. But, you know, we can vote to override your veto. And at some point, there may be a fifth vote. It's not a done deal.
Right. No, it's not. So-
You know, it depends.
Yep. Okay. All right. We've got that. And next would be business from the public. Anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay. Not seen anyone. Thank you, folks, for your patience through that. Next is an adoption of a resolution, and this is amending the Albany Enterprise Zone boundary and repealing Resolution Number 6715. This is on page 236. And Seth, you're gonna give us a report.
I guess editorial comment, our-
Service down.
Well, yeah. But it seems that the microphones are much better.
Yes. Yes.
But do we have, do we have portable microphones if somebody away from the dais wants to talk?
We still have the, we still have the microphones that were there before.
Could be.
Well, good evening, Mayor and councilors. We are coming for you this evening along with John Pascone to talk about amending the enterprise zone that was approved this last summer. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on why we're proposing that you do that. So just, by the way, a quick background, enterprise zones, as we know, are one of the very few incentives that exist statewide to incentivize business development and expansion. The zone here in Albany provides for up to three years of local property tax exemption on building, development, expansion, or equipment purchases for manufacturing-related firms. And this applies to both new firms that are located in the area, as well as expansions of existing firms. Those firms are allowed an additional two years of local property tax abatement if they're paying their employees 150% of the average wage in the county in which that enterprise zone is located. So as you probably know, we had a map, and I don't know if we could pull that up, I think it's on the desktop there, or should be. But our enterprise zone spans both Lynn and Benton Counties. And the average wage for Lynn County is $46,600, and Benton County is $61,600. So if you take 150% of both of those average wages, the difference is nearly $22,000, which brings us to the proposed amendment this evening. When the new zone was being established this last summer, we inadvertently left some land in Benton County in North Albany. There it is. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Which is in blue, you can see there. I don't know if you can scroll down at all, but the land in blue was left in North Albany. So as it turns out, our methodology for deciding which land was included and which wasn't inadvertently left this land there. And that means that anybody developing in Albany to the requirements of an enterprise zone is required to pay their employees the higher of the two county median, or average wages. And again, that difference is nearly $20,000, $22,000 between Lynn and Benton Counties. So if an outfit is building or expanding in somewhere in Albany proper, not in North Albany, they would be required to pay those wages-
Twenty thousand dollars a year?
Over 22, about $22,000 over what they would if it was just in Lynn County. That's right. So furthermore, to amend the enterprise zone, we have to justify to the state why that would need to happen. And we looked into the statute and that pretty closely and worked with the statewide manager for enterprise zones, a guy named Art Fish on this, and he gave his, his thumbs up that, yes, in fact, we've checked those boxes. The most important being that the land that someone could develop on in North Albany, if there was any left that fit the zoning requirements, doesn't actually allow for the sorts of development that would apply for enterprise zone benefits. So there's a little bit of commercial land that's included, commercially zoned land in North Albany, but it really doesn't apply to those sorts of firms that would qualify for enterprise zone benefits. So our proposal, and John's here to answer questions as well as our enterprise zone manager, was that we would remove the land from North Albany without any real loss to the rest of the district or the enterprise zone. And it doesn't affect anything else besides removing that and then allowing for that median wage to be reflective of Lynn County rather than Benton County.
So do you show the property here that is in that area that would be appropriate for development?
Yeah, let me use the pointer here for you, Dick. Oh, you know, it's not working, but let me just point it out. There's that big chunk of blue land towards the bottom of North Albany.
Oh, yeah.
That's really the only part that has any kind of commercial zoning on it. And still, it doesn't allow for the sorts of- it doesn't allow for the sorts of development that would qualify for enterprise zone benefits.
So basically... Kind of nice not to develop that anyway.
It's tragic.
Well, basically, when we did the zone, the new Albany zone, it had to be an urban zone, we got zealous and included North Albany and didn't know that the requirements would require us to use the higher Benton County wages, so... So this has never come up before? No.
Well, and just as a reminder, it was only established in June this last year, and the only reason it became obvious to us is there's an outfit who's looking to locate here in Albany, who's paying very good wages, around $70,000, $75,000 would be the average wage to their employees. And under the current situation, they wouldn't qualify for that extended benefit because 150% of Benton County's median, or average wage is $91,000.
From Oregon State. Yeah.
So, Celine, do you have what it would look like after those were removed? It'd just be blank up there?
The pink. Oh, yeah. Yeah, the blue would be gone, and the pink is the Albany Enterprise Zone.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct. And there also are some requirements or opportunities around how large the zone can actually be, how much land it can encompass, and we're well below that threshold right now. So even if within Albany proper, there was a rezoning effort sometime in the future to free up more industrial zone land, for example, we'd still be able to amend or add that to the enterprise zone without any issue.
Okay. All right.
Okay, fine.
What would you like to do? Resolutions on page 236.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Drive safely, John. Okay, next, council, you have a long consent calendar, and if there isn't any items to be pulled off, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, should carry. Next is Hill Street Reconstruction. Staff report? Yes, Chris.
We just... Just did after the judge.
Good evening. Your staff tonight is recommending an award of the contract for ST 1903 Hill Street Reconstruction, 24th to 34th Avenue, to Pacific Excavation of Eugene, Oregon. They were the lowest of seven bidders. Their bid is just over $3 million. The high bid was just under $4.3 billion, and the engineer's estimate was $4.4 million. This project is going to reconstruct Hill Street between 24th and 34th Avenue, very similar to what you see was done last summer north of 24th Avenue. This project also includes a 24-inch water line that's identified in the water facility plan, so that we don't have to dig up our new road here in a few years. Any questions?
This is very encouraging to be able to see the difference from the estimate and how less it was. Was there...when is the 24th Avenue one planned that connects to, you know, the Hill Street? Kind of, if you go from 20, if you go from Hills to Gary Street, it's, isn't that in our CIP plan?
It is, and I don't remember. I think that plan is in the process of being updated at the moment, and so I don't remember...it's shown in the next five years, I believe, last I saw, but I don't know which year that is in. But it's coming up.
Since we came under bid, it'd be nice to know if you could get some of that pavement, you know, redone on 24th to connect to it, if that would be a cost saving since they're so close together. Yeah, it's pretty alligator of a road.
I have a question, Mayor. So I'm looking at the budget that was in the page 262, 50, 262, and it says the total estimated project cost is 3.904700 million, 3.9, excuse me, 3.9 million, and the project budget is 5.9. And there's an over, or under, can you explain that? So they say it's going to be 3.9, but it's under by 2.9.
Our estimate was 5.9.
That's what I wanted to know. So we come up with the 5.9?
Engineering.
Engineering, okay. So that's, I understand now.
Okay.
We're not always this low.
No. Wait a minute.
We like this way, this direction versus the other one.
Okay. Will you be replacing the old plumbing? Because I know that Chris has brought up the drawing with all the bad pipes and stuff on, is there, will you replace all those as well with this project?
For sewer pipes?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, on this section, the sewers were all replaced within the last 15 years.
Oh, they were, okay.
And so we're going to make some changes as needed to that, but for the most part, there aren't any...
Bad ones.
It's the water line that's really bad in this case that needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do?
I'll just make a motion to authorize staff to award the contract for ST 19-03 to the responsible bidder. Looks like Pacific Excavation.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Chris. Next is an appointment, and this is on page 265. Daniel Ropp to the Human Relations Commission.
Move to appoint. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
My only concern with this is that I looked at all the, ma'am, I'm sorry, Mayor, is that I looked at all the applicants for the previous process, reappointments. There was nothing really in the body of what he wanted to be, other than real world...I can't work with that.
I can explain that.
But I need him to. I mean, when people filled out their stuff for airport and other committees, there was paragraphs or sentences that would kind of state where their position was or how they felt about serving the community, and giving real world advice or experience doesn't help me. I need to do more.
Okay.
Just discussion, right?
Okay. Any response or...
Is this your appointment, Mayor?
No.
It's my appointment.
Your appointment?
This is a young man. You recognize the last name, because...
I don't.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
He is a young man who is, has worked his entire life, is a guy who works right now on a farm. His real world experience is the fact that he was discriminated against as an Asian young man. So when someone starts talking about discrimination and what that feels like, he knows exactly what that's like. And that's why I picked him.
What committee is it?
HRC.
Human Relations Commission.
Human Relations.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, business from the council, and let me switch to this other one. Bessie?
I'm just going to bring it up. It's something about, since we're going into the budget season or whatever, and I know we brought it up a year or two ago, it seems like we're always needing money, you know, Mr. Robbins has said that. But maybe it was last year, we brought it up about getting a grant writer, you know, that's their job. And it was said, well, they can't really, because the departments are different, they need this and this and this. But I'm thinking, could it be possible that that's only their job, but they can go talk to the different department heads and find out what they need and really get schooled in it and stuff? Because it just seems like we're missing out on a lot of dollars that are out there that maybe we could get. It's just a suggestion to bring up again to see if it's possible. Okay? That's all.
Bill? Dick? Rich?
Yeah, I have a couple. You folks tasked me Monday with talking with the county, and the conversation started with my asking them to step back away from approval of the project on top of Knox Butte. And I asked them if they had any time left, and as it turns out, their 120 days was up on February 1. So they didn't really have much of a choice. They could, if they held off, the applicant could simply walk into court and say, they didn't do their due diligence in the time allotted, give it to me, and the court would award it. So they went ahead and passed it. This was not, and if they said, well, no, it sounds nice, working with the city, and they wanted, they made sure, they told me that, yes, they're interested in working with the city and coming up with ground rules and so forth. But this one, they couldn't wait, simply because, you know, the 120 days was up. That's the one thing. The other thing, in the same thought process of working together, I'm a Lynn County Parks Commissioner, and the state comes to Lynn County to say, we want you to take over a state park up there because you do a good job. And so now, there's, you know, the caves up there, up the canyon, you know, 14,000-year-old petroglyphs. Oh, it's really an overhang, it's not a cave, but what they're doing is now the same thing, the federal government is now coming to us. You know, could you think about taking over all these other parts, clear to the top of the hill? Well, because they appreciate the way that Lynn County Parks does a good job. Bottom line to this is everybody wins when they work together. I mean, people get a better park system, it's easier to get a reservation. The county park system may make a little bit of money on it. The state saves a bunch of money on it. The federal government saves a bunch of money on it. And as you've heard me harp before on, you know, whether it is federal money, or state money, or county money, or city money, it's the taxpayers' money. And as representatives of taxpayers, we, in my thought, should be saving money any time we can, from wherever we can. My thought is, isn't there a way? Or should we be interested in having talks with other groups within, whether it is the county on, well, MPO, obvious for me. We have a transportation system. We're paying $7 and something, $8 for a ride for someone who comes and pays a dollar for that. The Lynn Benton Loop System. Well, there's also one that runs to the top of the hill occasionally. There's the other bus systems. Would it be better if we had a integrated system, one that was under one head? So when they talked about having something come from Sweet Home, and they came from Sweet Home through Lebanon and came out Highway 20, and there are kids that are going to go to school on those places where they go by, should we partner with the school district to, like in dozens of cities? They just swipe a card, or have a token, or something, and the school district then pays back? I mean, it's those kinds of things that I think we could save some money for the taxpayer. We may not save money, and I fully recognize that when you walk up to someone who's in charge of something, and you say, well, gee, here, let's take that away from you, or let's give some of your stuff to somebody else, there's going to be pushback. But we do that now. Staff does that with the county, staff...I think we ought to do that a lot more in a lot of areas. So I would like, ask you to think about that, and let's talk about it in offline or whatever.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Alex?
I'm good, thank you.
Mike? Okay. The only thing I will mention, as I mentioned about House Bill 2001, do you want to take a position on that bill or not if the bill moves forward? It could, it might not, it could move forward very fast. It's just, I noticed that they did do a bill that did have a lot of controversy, and it was over rent control, and they pushed that one through real fast, but we just don't know when it's going to come to this decision.
Is that one already?
Yeah, well, I think it's going to the Senate, or it passed through the Senate, it's going to the House, I think. Yeah, I know. That's why I'm worried about this one, too. So do you want to have a position or not?
Yeah, it's not very democratic.
Okay, all right. I will just advocate on my own behalf.
You can advocate on my behalf, for sure.
Okay, so, all right. I just really think that trying to take away and transform our single-family, existing neighborhoods and any new development into multifamily is not for what cities are, cities have always planned for, so...
It's a giant step backwards, and we're going to be back in the situation we saw in the 50s and 60s where many cities were pretty slummy, and our city was going that way, we got it turned around, and I think this will force it back the other way.
Yep. Yep, I do.
It's a real shame.
Okay, all right. I didn't have anything else. Peter?
Just one thing, you'll recall that a few weeks ago, we briefed you on long-range planning efforts and the need to make a concerted effort in that direction. We've had some setbacks in terms of getting no-cost proposals for our buildable lands inventory, so Jeff would like to talk to you for a couple of ideas. We want to keep the momentum, keep the project, the effort moving forward, so Jeff has some ideas.
All right, so there were a series of studies that we talked about needing to pursue over a period of time here, the buildable lands inventory, economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, and then a need to do some area planning in the East I-5 area. And we needed to do the first three plans that I mentioned before we can get to the East I-5 area planning. And the buildable lands inventory is the key first piece in making all of those puzzle pieces come together. The costs of those studies were, for those first three that we need before we can think about the East I-5 study, were in the range of $30,000 to $40,000 apiece, and as Peter said, we had an opportunity to try and pursue that buildable lands inventory. Unfortunately, what ended up happening is, one, it was a really small project with a quick turnaround time, and apparently, there was a big push of similar-type projects that are all due at the end of June through some, through a program that the state was running. So a lot of cities took advantage of that, and they were, the people that do those studies were just jam-packed with work till the end of June. The other thing that happened is, we talked about how I'd like to pursue a grant for that East I-5 area plan, that was the big dollar one, or that one, if you use the dollar amount of the South Albany Area Plan, which was also grant-funded, that was like $250,000 of grant money that was received. So we'd obviously like to try to do that through a grant again, rather than have to try to pull our own funds together, our own local funds together. The grant application for that came out right after I had that presentation, and it's due at the end of the month. And so in order to get all of the pieces to line up, in order to get all the pieces of work done when we need to get them done, to try to put together a strong grant application, and to try to get through this process without... this process without longer delay than necessary, what I would like to do is request that we use the money that we were going to use for the buildable lands inventory and combine that. What I'm asking for is authorization to access up to $80,000 of the Brandis property proceeds. So the monies that, that we received through the sale of the Brandis property. So we, with the agreement that we have in place on the very last parcel, we're receiving $700,000 more than what was borrowed to fund that in the, that LID in the first place. What I'd like to do is access a portion of that, that excess in reimbursement through the proceeds of the property sales, and issue one large, larger contract for the buildable lands inventory, the housing needs analysis, and the economic opportunities analysis. In doing that, hopefully, we'll get some economies of scale, just based on having a large, one work effort. There are some, some interrelationships between those, so getting one consultant working on those. Familiar with it. Should have more interest because it's a larger project. It can also assign a longer timeframe to its completion, because I don't have subsequent pieces that are backed up that I need to issue additional contracts for. Obviously, it's easier for us because we're issuing one contract instead of three as well. So I'd like to do that. And then the benefit for the grant application is that I can demonstrate that, that we're serious in moving forward in the direction of having all of the data we need in order to hit the ground running at the time that we have to start spending the grant funds. So the ask is to access that, up to $80,000 of those Brandis property proceeds.
Up to 80, you said?
Up to 80, yeah.
Counsel?
Do you have any idea what the chances of us getting finished quicker by doing it this way are? One, one piece instead of three? Meaning?
Yeah, I think we are more, that we, if we're able to lump that into one contract, there are pieces that can be done simultaneously, because there'll be consultants that work together, the subconsultants. So we should, this will, this will end up being, given where we are today, with what we know now, this will be the fastest way that we could get through the process.
Any idea when we'd get, we'd get real numbers?
I think we have, let's see, we have to, those three studies, we'd need those to be done in early 2020, because I think it's June, we have to be off and running with, if we were successful in the grant application, we would have to be off and running on that study in June of 2020, if I remember correctly.
Thank you. So you said the grant has to be done by the end of this month?
The, we have a pre-application that we have to submit. Yeah.
All right, someone put that up.
Okay. Is that okay, counsel? Do you want to make a motion?
I move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I don't know. It takes a motion.
The motion would be for...
$80,000 from the Brandis property.
Yeah.
Excess. Not that it has to go back to economic development.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Peter?
Nothing else.
All right. Okay. With that, we're going to be going into executive session, but let's just go ahead and take a three or four-minute recess. Thank you, folks.